I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in flag of the.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
I want to welcome everybody here this evening and welcome our viewers on television. And I want to ask if there's anybody who's attending the meeting tonight who would like to speak to the committee on a topic that's not related to the budget. And the reason why I phrase it that way is we will be having a public hearing on the budget on our next meeting, which is the 17th. So is there anybody who wants to address the committee on a topic that's not on the agenda here this evening? Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm going to move to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is the warrant for this evening. Ms. Hunter.
Okay. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-120618 in the amount of $966,312.76 as presented.
That's the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan, is the second a motion? Is there any question on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no hands, we will take the vote then, please. Everybody voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Now, before we move to our budget matter, I want to ask you all to participate in a little celebration here this evening. Some of you may know this, we keenly know it on the school committee, that this is this may be Nancy's last meeting before the school committee.
(laughing).
Or with the school committee.
Never.
And I have to say that we are so grateful for everything you do for us. There are so many times when we had to come to you to solve a problem, and you solved the problem, and then two weeks later, when we had the same problem, we came back again with the same problem, and you solved it again, and you solved it graciously. We're good because of all that you have done. So tremendous debt of gratitude from us to yourself. And Michelle would like to make a small presentation.
Perfect. All right. I think they gave me this honor because you were my classroom mom in second grade and probably all through elementary schools. So I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you. (applause). It's been a wonderful 11 years.
At this time, I will be turning the meeting over to Dr. Maestis to do our fiscal 20 budget presentation. Dr. Maestis.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. We have a number of presentations to provide tonight. We'll start with an overview of the budget. Before we do that, I'd like to really take a moment to thank everyone here that's in the audience, our staff, and back at central office that had a part in putting this budget together. The PowerPoint that you'll view tonight, we updated today, so that if you looked at the PowerPoint over the weekend, we did some formatting changes. We edited graph. So this information, this has been updated on electronic school board, so we were reviewing it this morning and felt we found a couple of errors, and we fixed those, and we will have some other adjustments made as we go through the presentations. There's a lot of detail to our budget. Our cost center managers will have the opportunity tonight to give you some previews and some of the work that they've done. So very typical in our process, I'll give the overview of the evening, talk about the budget a little bit, and then we'll have cost center managers come up and order, and then we'll walk through the budget that way tonight.
And I just want to thank Andrew Burgess and Brian Dunn for being here from the FinCom sitting with us this evening. We appreciate that. Thank you.
And Dr. Swanson, just a follow-up to that, we will have another meeting with the Finance Committee Subcommittee for Education to do walkthrough. So any questions you have, and I might ask anyone from the general public that has questions regarding any of the information that we present, we can get back to you regarding any questions you have. But primarily Finance Committee Subcommittee, we do have that opportunity to sit down and walk through things a little bit more detail based on the questions you have. All right. So let's go and get started. I'm going to stand up and go from there.
So I'm going to go ahead and start off talking a little bit about the methodology that we use to go and develop the budget. And typically what happens when we develop our budget pre-development, we have the opportunity to meet with town manager, Boris Leckman, and just kind of get a forecast of where we need to be for the budget process. This year, the direction was to come in at same level of service. Same level of service is really having the opportunity to operate the same programming features that we do operate today, same, you know, programs that we do have in place today. So that's how this budget is built, same level of service. So everything that we talk about tonight is really relative to what those numbers look like based on that same level of service model. We have the opportunity to meet with our department heads. We meet, all the departments' heads are here tonight, so the cost center managers. The way this budget is put together is really dictated by the state of Massachusetts and what they require for us to assemble our budgets, and how they're assembled are assembled by code structure. That code structure is explained in some of the handouts, and Mr. Costin will actually have an opportunity to just briefly walk through that with you tonight. But it does give you an opportunity to actually see how these codes structures are assembled. So it's, you know, it's one of those things that we've been working with this coding structure for many, many years. It has morphed. From time to time, you will see within a budget that we make a change to a line, and that's because a lot of times the state has modified a methodology on how they want our budgets to look, and we will change a line or transfer dollars from one line to another. A lot of time that happens because of what the state is asking us to do. And our budget message was really to look at same level of service, and that's what we'll present tonight. One thing that I might add, and I think the school committee knows, the general public really doesn't know too much about it, I think Finance Committee may know, but several years ago, Mr. Costin has been with me for going on 11 years now, and when he first came in, one of the things that he really wanted to do was to do an auditing of our budget process, an auditing of how we actually build a budget and what the outcome is. So every year, we have an auditor come in, and they analyze our budget to make sure that we are actually doing it appropriately, so we don't have any errors in the process, and also make sure that allocations are aligned with what the state will like us to do. So that is something that we do every year. We do present a report to you. I think last year was the first year in my 11 years as superintendent, probably my 20 years being in the district, that we really haven't had any errors that were reported by the auditor, which was something that we felt very good about. So let's move on with the presentation. So this slide really demonstrates the historical increases dollar amount from year to year, and this goes back from 2009. So if you take a look back to 2009, you can identify that we were, you know, several opportunities that we had, we had three years in a row that we were below prior year expenditure. And that was back in 2008, 2009. We had, the economy had shifted dramatically. We had a number of issues with our budget. We got some federal grants to actually subsidize our staffing. So you can see in 2010, there are two benchmarks for 2010, and you can see that we actually were going through two different periods of time. We had a situation with the state when it had 9C cuts. Now, 9C cut is where the governor has the option to enter into the budget and cut it at a given point during the year. If you look at 2010, we had another, we had a cut midway through the year, and we actually froze our budgets. And what we also did is we wrote some federal grants that were subsidies that were actually offset any layoffs that we had in that, that we were not going to have in the district. So we were able to keep our staffing levels where they needed to be. We're very fortunate, a lot of districts around us were not able to do that. So you can see the trajectory. We went from $1.4 million below funding from 2009 to 2000, we were up to, in 2012, 2012, we were 2.2 million above prior year. If you move all the way up to 2017, 2017 is the year that we introduced the full day K program to the district. And you remember the days that we went to town meeting, we did all the community presentations, because we really felt it was important to get full day K into the Plymouth Public Schools. We had a spike in our budget, but one of the reasons why we, one of the compelling reasons why we really want to look at full day K is our FTE student count, full-time equivalent count, would go up from half-time students to full-time students, and we would get additional chapter 70 dollars, which actually allowed us to get more chapter 70 the following year, which really the students had to be in their seats for a year before we got credit for those students. So we were able to recover from that about 50% of the total cost we got in chapter 70, which was a big thing for us. If we move down to last year, we were 2.8, 2.8 percent, excuse me, 2.8 million dollars above prior year. And this budget that we're moving forward to next year, same level of service, is a little over $3 million for next year. So this is same level of service methodology, and this is what the numbers look like. So let's take a look at percentage of increase. So this, the previous slide was dollars, this is actually with the percentages. So the percentage moving forward from last year, last year we were 3% above prior year. The year before that, we were 4.56. So next year, we're at 3.14. It's 3.14% above prior year. Keep in mind, I have a slide in the presentation that highlights that the increases that we're experiencing next year in this, in this graph is contracted services, and you will see that as we move forward. So this is how our budget is broken down. This is our budget without insurance. So our budget is a little over $100 million. 63 million, which is actually 63%, is a certificated staff, certificated salaries. So keep in mind that any employee that works with children directly, they're certified, they have licensure, that's appropriate. Now in Massachusetts, within five years, you have to get your master's. So all these staff that we have that are under a license, the certificated staff is 63% of the total budget. We have another section, which is clerical staff, which is 2.7 million, that's 3% of the budget. So clerical staff, anyone that works in our offices, central office, that works in a clerical capacity, that's where their budget line item looks like. Other salaries is $12 million, that's 12% of the budget. That is our custodians. Anyone that works in our school system that is not identified as clerical or certificated, they are in that cost center. And then we're looking at contracted services. Contracted services is $17 million, and it's 18% of the budget. Now, in contracted services, we talk about this quite a bit within the school system. Within contracted services, you'll see special education, you'll see transportation, both special education and regular day education, you'll see those contracts in there, you'll see contracts that we have for internet providers, we'll see contracts that we have for copiers. So anything that has a contract, those items are in that particular cost center. Keep in mind, the high majority of our contracts have escalators in them, transportation is one. Earlier this year, I sent you via the school committee agenda, letters from different private school placements that we send our children to. And some of our students go to private placements, and we got notice that a lot of these schools are increasing their tuition by $20,000, $30,000 a year. Keep in mind, some of these tuitions are $100,000 to $200,000 a year for a private placement. So when you start taking a look at some of the inherent costs that we have for education, some of these contractual pieces that we have are really hard for us to get our hands around because of the complexities behind them, and that is one example. The next one is supplies and materials. The entire supply and material line that you'll see in the Plymouth Public Schools is $2.7 million. That represents 3% of the budget. So supplies and materials that you, we will talk about tonight, the majority of what our principals, coordinators, and directors will talk about tonight are going to be supplies and materials. The majority of the items that you see on those other pieces of the budget are really centered around contracts that we offer, contracted services, our teachers' contracts, clerical contracts, all those have increases in them. There's column and lane changes for years of experience, those are added into the budget. But tonight's presentation is really, when we start talking about it, is centered around this 2.7 million. Keep in mind, we'll also have opportunities tonight to talk about the next line item, which is other expenses. Other expenses are centered around professional development and obligations that we have based on contract and based on state mandate for training our staff and professional development. So we'll talk about some of those features tonight, and you'll get a good sense of what is happening around that piece. The next slide demonstrates our school budget with insurance. This is one budget area that is of concern to the community, and you can see right now just for including the health, health insurance for active employees is 18 million. That's about 15% of this particular chart. When you add that to retired health employee benefits, $6 million, about 5% of this particular chart. And what we started doing in the budget is demonstrating, on the town side and also the school department side, what workman's comp and disability, actual dollars were for us to move forward with the budget. Those are budgeted now for the school department. So you can actually see for next year, we're looking at $733,000. So that's something that we budget now. The town actually manages it, but it is something that we demonstrate to you tonight, so you can actually see the entire school department budget is $125 million, and you see almost $26 million in benefits. This category really talks about total budget increases by those particular areas. It's another way of showing it. You can see that just in certificated salaries to honor the contractual obligations, column and lane changes for the school department's certificated staff, it's up, it's about 65% of this total graph, it's up about $1.9 million. And that is actually because we have a contractual obligation. We have those common lane changes, same thing with clerical salaries. That difference next year is $32,000, so about 1% of this graph. Other salaries is about $470,000. That's, like I said, once again, it's to cover those contractual obligations. Contracted services, $500,000. Contracted services, like I mentioned before, our bus contract, you'll see the increases to that. I believe it's about, it's about almost $200,000 just for our bus contract increase. You'll notice some of our special education increases will be in there, and other contracts that we have throughout the district. Supplies and materials across the district, we have an increase of about $48,000. Keep in mind, within our supplies and materials across the district, we do have escalators that are in some of the consumables that we do buy. They don't always stay at that same price, and we buy in quantity, so you'll see some increases to that. So keep in mind that everything that we're presenting tonight is really to maintain the services that we have in the district today. We're not adding any new programs, we're not adding any new series of text for our schools. This is really just to maintain that we have, what we have in our school district today. And other expenses is up about $3,000, and that is really around professional development. And that's what that looks like. This slide demonstrates contracted services, and it highlights lines that have significant change. So these are the lines that we are working with. We work with them every year. They are difficult because they have escalators and increases behind them. Let's take a look at, starting from the right on over. Look at regular transportation. Regular transportation for next year is up $171,000. Natural gas and propane is up $181,000. Charter school transportation is up $150,000. Special education transportation is up $117,000. Network and connectivity, this is for our district-wide network, is up $56,000. Buildings and grounds, this graph is out of proportion to the rest of the sections of the graph, it's $18,000. And oil is up $14,000. Keep in mind, we still do have some of our schools, very few that have oil. We've converted from oil to natural gas and electricity to natural gas. In all our satellite schools, all the schools that were built, West Elementary, Federal Furnace Elementary, Indian Brook, we have this building. They were all electric about seven years ago, eight years ago. We've slowly converted them from electricity to natural gas, which has been, or propane. South Elementary, also, South Elementary was propane, and we converted that to natural gas. But you can see where we have some level of control, our electricity, you see that we, you'll see in the graph, we've done very well with that, and we see a stabilization of that. Sped tuitions is down by $182,000, and that's not necessarily because the sped tuitions are going down, it's because we are able to educate children that were normally sent out to be educated in the district. So the comment I made earlier about, you know, tuition's going up and tuition is kind of driving some of the costs, this is, it's down by $181,000 because I think our special education department is doing some great work to actually create programs in district. And I might add, and you will hear it throughout the budget process, that we have numerous programs, in district programs, that are, have really been beneficial for our audience, our students, our stakeholders, to be educated in Plymouth, that years ago, they were not educated in our district. So I think when we see a line item like that go down, it really signifies, in my eyes, that we're doing a good job to actually bring those services in district and not have an expense out of district like that. This slide is one that I talk about every year. It really talks about state aid to the community. This is the trajectory of state aid from 2008 to 2019. You'll take a look, from in 2008, we had about $19.5 million in chapter 70. This year, we're projecting that we will come in about $24 million. If you take a look at that and look at, you know, overlay that with any school district in Massachusetts, you look at, this really has not kept up with the increased demand for services and mandates that are put on education in Massachusetts today. So when we talk at this table about lobbying the legislature to relook at chapter 70, this is a compelling reason to do that. Keep in mind that the $24 million, or it's $26 million that we are anticipating to get next year, that $26 million is before charter school reimbursement. The chapter 70 dollars does fund the charter schools, it funds one, and it will eventually partially fund another, and it does phase out over time. But keep in mind that we will probably see about $18 million, $19 million of this chapter 70 money to the school department. So one of the things that is somewhat troubling to me is that the rest of that, the rest of that is, comes directly from the taxpayer. So we are subsidized by a small amount, you see the number on the screen, but every expense increase that we have that goes up, it really is probably going to come most of the time from the taxpayer unless we get a grant to cover it or some other aid or relief that we have that can actually cover some of those expenses. Let's take a look at special education placements. Special education placements, you can take a look where we are. We have almost, you know, was that almost $7 million, over $7 million in placements. We get circuit breaker funding that allows us to, you know, reimburse those accounts. But you can see that circuit breaker funding for the budget that you're going to be discussing tonight, we are anticipating about $2.5 million in circuit breaker support, but the district will pay about $4.5 million for special education placements. If you notice, the blue in this particular graph is down, and that's where that savings is coming in that I discussed with you earlier. So it's something that I think will help us dramatically. Actually, this chart represents that we get more circuit breaker opposed to, opposed to reduction. So if we take a look at it, we're anticipating more circuit breaker next year, which is a good thing for the town of Plymouth. Let's take a look at budgets for utilities. This slide is one slide that we take a great deal of pride in because it's taken a lot of effort to actually get this to the point where we are today. Back in 2012, our budget for utilities for the Plymouth Public Schools was $2.9 million. As we move forward today, the budget we're presenting, we're anticipating a utility cost of $1.5 million. We were able to do that by controlling our costs through electricity and our solar projects that we put in across this part of Massachusetts. We have a number of solar farms that actually produce electricity for the district and the town. We've been able to accomplish that. We are also implementing solar at Plymouth South High School. Plymouth South High School now does have solar operation on the rooftop, and we're also putting in a battery fixture that will be installed later in 2019. But you can see that our biggest dilemma right now within this particular utility area is the blue trajectory, and that really identifies propane and natural gas. So you can see propane and natural gas has gone up, which is causing our utility to go up. So, and also oil has gone up slightly. But you can see, we have minimized our demand on oil quite a bit. Back in 2012, we used about $430,000 in oil. As you see today, we use about $50,000 in oil for the buildings that still take oil. Let's take a look at the next slide, which is grant funds. This slide demonstrates the variety of grant funds that we get. It's really difficult to read, but you can actually see that we do receive a number of grants. Some grants have come and some grants have gone, but if you want to get a good handle on the grants that we receive by title, you can actually see what those totals are by grant and how they change from year to year. So if you're interested in really understanding what we do for grants, that we have a number of grants that we write and a number of grants that we receive, we're very fortunate to have a number of them coming in to actually help us to do what we need to do in our school system. The next slide demonstrates the major federal grants that we receive. We receive a special education allocation grant, which is $1.9 million. We are anticipating that that will be stabilized. We anticipate that we will have that for next year. Title I, Title I has been a very vulnerable grant. It has gone down. Last year, we anticipate that this will continue to have a downward trajectory, and it's really difficult for us to manage this grant. It was significant years ago. We used to receive about $1.2 million probably 10, 12 years ago, and it is really just trying to trail down. 2015, we were $771,000, and today, it's gone up a little bit, and we're at $952,000. And the last one is Title II A Grant, and this is an improving teacher quality grant, and this is a grant that Dr. Campbell writes, and we get about $205,000 to be able to address some of the professional development needs that we have in our district. Keep in mind that there is a strict guide for us for offering professional development that we really work with all our teachers. As I've mentioned before, there are a number of staff that we have that are certificated, and we really work with them to maintain their licenses. So we are at a point now with grants that we're very fortunate to actually keep Title I. We, at times, have felt that it's going to continue to just be reduced, but hopefully we can continue to keep that. We receive a great deal of service for the money that we receive from, for that particular grant. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Costin, and he's going to start talking about our object code breakdown in a little bit more detail on how our budget is put together. There you go, sir. The right one.
The right one. Thank you. So I have the exciting parts, talk more about the accounting structure. Dr. Maestis did a very good job of giving you a micro view, I think, of our budget, getting into some of the details. But I want to kind of put the elevation up just a little bit and look at the, this, I'm sorry, next spreadsheet. There we go. There we go. To give you just kind of a summary and talk a little bit about our budget, because it is a large budget. it, it is a large budget and it, it can be a little bit overwhelming when you're looking at it. But if you break it down into these six components, it kind of gives you a better, a better idea of, and a way to kind of wrap your arms around this budget. I know that Dr. Maestis has, has talked about all these items, the certificated salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries. When we look at total salaries, we're up two point four million dollars. Now, what we do in, in, in my department, we put this budget together, we take the actual current employees that we have, and we look at all their contracts and what they're entitled to for step lanes. We project lanes. As you know, teachers have steps increases, many of our contracts have step increases. And we, we actually apply those to the, to the actual bodies, the current number of staff that we have, no new additional FTEs. In addition to that, because of where we are with our contract negotiations, we do not have a settled contract for this year on any of our bargaining units, nor do we have any for next year. We have put in a projected COLA, which is in line with what the town's requirements have, have been for, for the school department and all departments. So, all of that is in there. The second part are obviously expenses, contracted services, supplies and materials. And when you, when you kind of look at it, you can see as, as Dr. Maestis said, the real increase is, is the five hundred thousand, which is in contracted services, and I know we'll go through all these items. Now, somebody may ask, well, why do you put the budget together this way? And it's, it's an exciting answer because the state requires us to. We use what's called the UMass system, and it's not the College UMass, it's the Uni- Unified Municipal Accounting System. If you were to go back to four point one in the agenda item and you look at the chart of accounts, it gives you twenty-six pages of state requirements of how we are to use function codes. And the reason, the reason the state does that, and they've added new codes for this past two years, which as a result, you may see some items that show expenditures in the last two years, but nothing going forward, nothing budgeted, or vice versa. You may see something budgeted with expenditures in the previous two years. So, what they've done is they've focused on delineating more detail for professional development in FY eighteen, and in FY nineteen, it's all technology. They're delineating and they're trying to define more technology. Part of the reason that we have to change that in the budget, and you don't see, you don't see a lot of why it's done with no previous history, is they tell us in June for FY nineteen, and we've already done the budget. So, we have to add new account codes, which really is a lot of work, and we have to move the funds. And we do that ongoing during the year. But I think it's important to remember that the state does require us to put it into these items, and the reason they do is they, we use this, we do this huge report, as every school district does, at the end of the year, and we supply all this information to the state in a unified system where they can then apply it into their state system. And we're at the point now where the Department of Ed is rolling out individual reports for schools. They'll be reporting, and, reporting so much more information. You know, the, I think the idea is to get it, and I'm not exaggerating, probably to the point of each grade level, each department, each function, you know, whether it's math, whether it's, whether it's science. We code that to that detail. So, that's something that, why we do it this way, every, every community does it this way. And so, there's, there's really no, no hidden reason for it. There's no, there's, there's no local determination. It's really, that's something that we, we as a, as a school district have to do. So, I think when you look at those six things, we keep hitting those thing, certificated salaries, one through six, that's what we're talking about. So, I'm going to go over just a few reports that are included in the packet, and that you'll, you'll see also routinely in our budget book. This is the same chart that, that we had previous, but this is really what comes out of our accounting system. It's the same information, which just has a little bit more of the progress of the budget from the department cost center level through superintendent, through the school committee. It just doesn't, doesn't have the percentages, which I, I tend to like the percentages and the increases. This is also a report that's included. It's kind of a neat report because it takes it out and it shows each cost center. Now, what's a cost center? Each cost center is either a building, or it's really an overall function for the school district, such as special ed or district-wide business, or it is specifically a school. And within that school, you'll have all of those accounts, which are one through sixes, and you will have function codes, which are DESEs assigned. A function code means whether it's transportation, whether it's supervision, whether it's the principal's salary, whether it's teacher's salary, a special ed, all of those have the same function code. So, they're all common within all the schools. So, this is a summary, again, of all, each, each cost center, and this is a different look at each cost center. This breaks it down within each cost center of one through sixes. Again, going back to that same foundation, that same process that the DESE aligns. And I think that kind of takes the budget and makes it a little bit more approachable when, when you look at it and break it into those pieces. This, this is the order of presentation for tonight. So, I think at this point, we will be turning it over to our first presenter.
Do any members have any questions at this point?
Yes, tonight, we have an order of presentation that is on the slide that you have in front of you. We're going to start with District Watch Facilities, which is Arthur Montron. He's Cost Center three fifty-nine. So, Arthur, if you would like to come on up.
So, while Mr. Montron is coming up, if you were to go to your electronic school board, item, agenda item, Arthur, and I apologize for taking your, a little bit of your time. Four, I know you're upset, but four point two, when you look at four point two, that's had all of those reports we discussed. If you're on item four point three, there's two reports. There's the Cost Center summary by department, and there is FY Cost Center Detail Report, number three fifty-two. If you click on the Detail Report, that is really what our Cost Center managers will be speaking to. And if you open up that report, number three five two, if you highlight over each Cost Center the name, not the number, open it, open it up, it'll bring you to the start of each Cost Center, their first page, okay? And I would ask each Cost Center manager, each presenter, if you're identifying an item, just refer to the page number, and then the, the school committee and the finance committee will be able to scroll down and, and follow. And the first item on each Cost Center is the total. I know it's a little bit backwards, but that's the total of the Cost Center, the percentage increase, the very top right-hand side. So, if you have any questions, please, just asking. Arthur, thank you.
So, go ahead, Arthur. So, Arthur, I want to ask you a question, so I get this clear when we start up right. So, I just brought up your Cost Center, and it's highlighted in yellow on the very first line. That's the recommendation. Is that correct?
The total, the total, yep.
Yes.
Yes, the total.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's, that's the total, correct.
Thank you.
Cost Center three fifty-nine is for buildings, grounds and maintenance. Overall total increase of two point seven percent on our bottom line. We broke it down into three specific categories, contracted services, which is up two point seven percent. Eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Supplies and materials are up four point four percent, or eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, and other expenses are up two point two percent at two hundred and twenty-three dollars. There's not really any big change in this budget, but if anyone has any specific question on any particular line item, I'd be glad to address it.
Questions?
Just one, I'm sorry, just one general comment. The, the majority of Arthur's budget, obviously, is, is to maintain all the buildings in the school district. Custodial salaries and those salaries of the individuals who are assigned to a building are in the building principal's Cost Center.
This budget only represents what the, that's basically my office.
That's it. And he just did page three fifty-two. Sorry, I was distracted there for a minute. Bring me up to where we are.
Red, I'm sorry, red, any questions?
Questions? Okay.
We're good? So, we were experiencing some technical difficulties with our microphone. Evan's working on it now, so I think we should be good to go. Our next group, we have eight elementary principals. We're going to have our elementary principals come up four at a time, and we're going to start with Cold Spring Elementary, Chris, Chris Morgan, Federal Furnace Elementary, Dan, Dan Harold, Hedge Elementary, Kristen Wilson, and Indian Brook Elementary, Erica and Freddie. Those are Cost Centers three oh four through three oh eight. Welcome. So, we're going to start with Chris Morgan tonight. She is the principal of Cold Spring Elementary. Cost Center three oh five.
Good evening. Thank you, Chris Morgan, Cost Center, Cold Spring, Cost Center three oh five. The report on page three fifty-two, we're page three, so right at the very beginning. Tell you a little bit about Cold Spring. Cold Spring currently has two hundred and twenty-six students. This year, we are projected to go down to two hundred and twenty next year. Cold Spring is one of three EL designated schools, so therefore, students that, English is not their first language, they come to Cold Spring if they're in the Cold Spring district, or if they're without, around the area, if our numbers are lower, then they would come to us. We are a whole school Title One school, and so therefore, the, we've received some of the funding that Dr. Maestis had spoken earlier about to help with our education curriculum, so that all students have access to good quality education to reach the standards that are required by the state. Additionally, right now, we are fifty percent of free and reduced lunch at Cold Spring. Additionally, with our services, we have partnered with Gosnold. So, Gosnold comes in and helps with social and emotional services, clinicians that work with our students. When we look at our budget for Cold Spring for next year, again, all our line projections are for two hundred and twenty students. There are some decreases in our lines due to that lower enrollment for next year, so all our curriculum, you'll see, will have a lower account, money account in those due to those student projections for next year as well. The thing that we'll see is an increase on page six is for our service contracts for our, our copiers. And so, as we replace copiers over the years from not, and we, they take on new ones, we have warranty contracts, and those warranty contracts then expire, so now we will be taking on those contract services next year. So, that's why you'll see a slight increase on page six in that line. All of our other lines, you'll see for like general education, our supplies are detailed, so I put in descriptions of what those materials are that we need to keep our education programs going and meeting the needs of our students. I detailed the different costs of those items as well. On page seven, for special education, there's one account that we have transferred our balance to special education, so the director of special education, Stacy Rogers, will be speaking to that later in her report. And other than that, we have no other increases for Cold Spring. Everything else, Dr. Maestis and Mr. Cost, however, spoke towards our salaries. I do want to acknowledge our PTA. Our PTA does a lot of fundraising and work for Cold Spring Elementary School with our families. They have raised funds to provide like Chromebooks and fencing around our playgrounds and then water ball, water filling stations. You know, we, they work closely with the local communities and businesses in our community that help support Cold Spring, and without their donations and fundraising to help support our PTA, some of these things, such as a fence and Chromebooks, would not be possible because they weren't supported through our budget.
So, Melvin, do you repeat, you're expecting two hundred and twenty students. What, what are you now?
I'm two hundred and twenty-six.
Two hundred what?
Two hundred and twenty-six.
Thank you. So, just a drop of six students?
Yes, yep. So...
Questions?
Next, we have...
I just wanted to say thank you for the detail. I really enjoyed the detail that was presented here. It was, really helped me know what you were, you know, explaining and what, like the cost, how you were breaking it down. My one question is, it might be more for Dr. Maestis, is I thought we were moving away from classroom printers, and I just saw one line was like classroom printers, and I didn't know if that was just a fluke or...
Well, I can speak to that. Some classrooms still have those classroom printers, but we are moving towards having all of our teachers move to a designated printer, so it's a passcode so they can print from their computer, and then go up to the, the printer that's by the staff room and unlock that. So, we are moving towards that.
Perfect, so as they...
It should start to.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Just, just one follow-up. Dr. Sorenz, and, and you'll see this within the elementary, you won't see that the, so much at the secondary, is there's a per pupil allocation for each area. So, the coordinators work with the principals, and they work with them on a per pupil allocation for dollars per child, per subject. So, we added a level of identification of consistency from every building, every elementary school. So, every child is in, that we make sure they get the same amount of resource for every building. So, that's something we did, I don't know, seven, eight years ago.
Just, I have a question on, on technology. Is, is there a keystroke that will bring us back to the first page rather than having, what is that keystroke?
There's a red box on the bottom right corner of your spreadsheet. If you click on that, it'll take you right to each page.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed, thank you.
You're welcome. And now, we're moving to Federal Furnace Elementary School.
I know.
And Mr. Dan Harold.
I feel like I should be shipped to town. Good evening, I know. Thank you. I'll give you a little history, I should say, or breakdown of Federal Furnace, which I'm presenting for tonight. Like you heard before, as Neil here again, it is a level, level service. Our budget is being built on three hundred and seventy students. Currently, we have nineteen classrooms at Federal Furnace with two ASD classrooms. We have about eighty-seven staff members, but they are not all Federal Furnace staff men. We do share a lot of our staff throughout the district. Some go to Indian Brook for like the ASD program. We also have some that go to the other schools to represent technology integration and so forth. So, it's, it's eighty-seven staff, but it's not all full-time. Currently, we're running at about forty percent for our free and reduced lunch. We are also a Title One school, which does allow us to give a lot of remediation services, specifically in ELA and mathematics for many of our students. I am currently being very supported by our, my new PTA, and I have to say, I'm getting ready to start my second playground in a three-year period. And as I said, we, we currently have the two ASDs, which I'll speak to in just a little bit. Moving into Federal Furnace, I did kind of look at it from the lens of Indian Brook. It's a very similar building, so I didn't kind of look at the history, I kind of looked at what we currently have and currently need it. So, there's a lot of ups and downs, you'll see, but when you look at percentages, sometimes it looks like a hundred percent, but that hundred percent could be going from three hundred dollars in an account to six hundred dollars in the count. So, it's very little amounts of money, but it does seem significant until you look at the amount. Specifically, there are a couple of accounts that are a little bit different. I will mention our general supply account, which is on page fifteen. On three fifty-two, report three fifty-two was a bit of a jump. It was, went from about sixteen thousand to twenty thousand, as well as technology on page fourteen. Page, report three fifty-two, again, the same thing, it went up about three thousand dollars. But it really is offset by many of the decreases in other accounts. So, the total budget... So, the total budget, when it, when you're looking at supplies for Federal Furnace, went up about $4,000 from the previous year, with the pluses and minuses. So it's a really small amount collectively, but again, it's a lot of individual moving, because I reflect it based on every account going through the Federal Furnace budget from the previous year. So, very little change. The one other item I will mention, there is a large decrease, and this is specifically noted on page 16 of report 352, and that is the ASD program personnel. The ASD program currently, we're housing, and we will be as well next year, until the students go through Federal Furnace, we'll be, we'll have three through grade five next year. But we are getting a decrease, but as we, we decrease our numbers of, for ASD at Federal Furnace, it is moving to Indian Brook, so that personnel is just shifting over. So you'll see decreases in that area, and that'll continue through the next several years until the ASD has vacated Federal Furnace and fully moved into Indian Brook. So, that's really the only other, excuse me?
Your current enrollment?
Current enrollment right now is at 360, and our projected enrollment was 370.
Next, we have Kristen Wilson. Kristen is the principal at Hedge Elementary. Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you. Hedge Elementary's, our current enrollment is 180 students. Last year, when we built our budget, we, we projected our enrollment to be at 169. When we look for next year, our numbers are based on a projection of 179. We are a school-wide Title I school, which we receive a lot of support from our federal grant to help us provide social, emotional support to our students as well as additional instructional support. We are also one of the three ELL schools. This year, we have one and a half ELL teachers. We have an increase in students receiving English as a second language. We have about 16% of our population are receiving English as a second language, and 28% of our population, English is their second language. That doesn't mean that they're requiring services, they may already be bilingual. We have 56 full or part-time employees, about 22 of our, 22 of our employees are full-time, so about 56 staff members altogether, and we have 11 classrooms in our building, grades K through 5. Right now, our special education percentage is about 18% of our students receiving services for special education, and our free lunch count, 100% of our students are receiving free lunch based on a grant that we qualify for. However, economically disadvantaged numbers are about 55.8%. And when you look at my budget, you'll see very small changes throughout the budget. Again, as my partners have mentioned, there are some contractual changes in the general ed supplies due to our copier contracts. There's also that money that was removed from the special education department, in which Stacy Rogers will be addressing later on. So overall, there's some minor changes, and also, in addition to some supplies, is the increase in salary changes from the contracts. We do work with Gosnold, and we have a woman in our building twice a week to provide outside services for, social, emotional services for our students. And in addition, our PTA works very hard to support and enrich our program. Our PTA is very small, we're a small school, but they really help us with our family events, and to help subsidize our field trips for our families as well. We also have some community partners that do things for us at school. We've, the Zion Lutheran Church provides readers that come and read with our students weekly, three times a week actually, and some other community agencies that help support our families, the Lions Club, the Pine Hills Foundation. Quincy College has offered some tutoring services for our students through our after-school tutoring program with some of their students. And the Rizzo Foundation, Verka Enterprises, they also support our families with coats and food and school supplies for home that, that they may need. And I think that's it. Do we have any questions?
Questions? Next.
Next, we have Indian Brook Elementary, and we have Erica Manfredi. Erica, welcome, and go ahead.
Good evening. Currently, Indian Brook, we have 55, pardon me, 571, I wish we had 50, 571 students enrolled, 86 staff members. Most of those are full-time, however, our paraprofessionals are all part-time except for, and I'll talk about this in a minute, our autism program. Those are full-time paraprofessionals, and we have 28 classrooms. Two of those classrooms are autism classrooms. So, our projected enrollment for next year is 557 students. We would continue with 28 home rooms and the 86 staff members. So again, like everyone else, it's a level service budget. My total budget has, has a slight increase. Doing the numbers, it's all, all salaries. It's all based on, on salaries. You will, you will notice some slight increases, but they're all offset by decreases in other areas. We're starting, as, as Dan talked about, as the autism program transitions over, we're starting to have to shift some money in, to support that area. We are not a Title I school. We currently are free and reduced percentage is about 23%, and we are, like I said, the autism program is transitioning. Right now, we have two classrooms. We service grades K to 2. Next year will be K to 3, and it'll take probably about two more years for us to fully transition over to K to 5. We also have a Gosnold counselor, she works five days a week in our building, that's of no cost to us, and our PTA is amazing. They fund all of our field trips, all of our in-building enrichment. They recently just had a, a great fundraiser that raised over $23,000. So, that will have some great field trips this year. And that's it, any questions?
For Principal Manfredi.
Dr. Maestas? Yes. So now, we are going to move to our next group of four. Our next four elementaries will start with Manmet Elementary, Nathaniel Morton, South Elementary, and West. We'll start with Cost Center 309. Keep in mind, if you go to your table of contents, if you actually just hit the Cost Center number, it'll take you right to the beginning of that particular Cost Center.
Good evening, Pat Frain.
Pat Frain, go right ahead, Dr. Frain.
Cost Center 309, which begins with page 40 on report 352. So, the budget for Manmet Elementary projects services for an enrollment of 266 students. We would be funding 15 home rooms and 46 staff members classified and certificated. The proposed budget for this Cost Center represents an increase of 4% from the previous year, and represents a level service budget. We don't have any district-wide programs housed at Manmet Elementary School, although we don't reach the threshold for being a Title I school-wide school. We are a targeted assistance school through Title I, so we receive a certain amount of funds for staff and for resources as well, but we're what's called a targeted assistance school, with 33% of our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. These supply accounts in all the different areas there reflect the allocated per people expenditures, and we try to augment what we receive through the district budget to help meet other needs as well. We've been very fortunate now for 15 years running to receive an average of $4,500 from the Entergy Corporation to fund our theater workshop program. They've been very consistent year after year after year with that, and it's been tremendous, the generosity through that grant. The Manmet Home and School Association does a great job every year raising anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 a year. Their latest project that they've funded is a sound system for throughout the hallways in our, our building. It's going to be about $2,000 or so, and it's really going to be a nice piece for our school when we have events or we have different needs for sound as we have different events at the school. So, those will be going in shortly, and we're very grateful for that as well. We also have a Gosnold counselor at Manmet Elementary, who services approximately 10 students on a weekly basis, and we've got other community partners that have been very generous to us as well. As with all the elementary schools, the, the Lions Club has been great in helping us to provide funds for needy families. At Manmet, we've also recently begun something called the K Kids, which is through the Kiwanis of Plymouth. They've funded that group getting started and provided them with some different resources to get organized and build that student leadership program at our school. Rosen Vicki's down the street from us is very generous to us as well, donates literally thousands of dollars on an annual basis to help support our schools. So, we've got a number of different partners that have been very generous to us, and we're very grateful for that. Any questions?
Would you tell me your projected enrollment for next year?
266 students.
Thank you. Oh, I thought that was this year, I'm sorry.
This year, it's about 268.
60 what?
268.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving to Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, and Michael Spencer, principal.
Good evening. I always feel like saying ditto when it gets to us down the. So this is Cost Center 310, begins on page 48 of report 352 and runs through page 56. I would want to start by thanking the hard work by our district coordinators to help provide the guidance for the dollar amounts, and also the material suggestions that Dr. Maestas referred to earlier. Overall, this Cost Center budget has an increase of 3.6%. Our current school enrollment for this year is 553 students to date. We are anticipated or projected for 565 next year. Last year's projection for our budget was 534, so in the ballpark, but we were a little bit higher than, than what we thought. We have 27 classrooms across Nathaniel Morton, serviced by 47 professional staff FTEs, and 26 non-certificated support staff. We have been a targeted assistance school in the past few years through Title I, however, we have not reached that threshold, as some of the dynamics have changed in the way they're looking at demographics. We have 28% of families that are considered low-income. We also house two district-wide special education program classrooms through what we call the Bridge Program. Those support students who are in grades three through five that are typically cognitively two years behind their same-age peers. We also are one of the other three schools who service English learners, and we have just about 5% of our total enrollment who fit into that characterization. We also have services that support social, emotional learning through outside agencies, so we have actually two different counselors working in our building, one through South Bay Counseling, and also, this year, we have extended to the Gosnold Center. It's probably close to 30 students that are serviced on a weekly basis through those two agencies. I would also want to echo what other schools have said in terms of supports from our PTA specifically. All excursions that are outside of school are paid for, both admission and bus fees by our PTA, in addition to just the countless family events that they're thinking about trying to run. We just had our annual breakfast with Santa this past Saturday, which was really successful, so things like that are there. And in the last few years, with a focus that we've put on sort of marine education, the enrichment coordinator's really thought about trying to find opportunities and, and local resources both in and out of the school. So, that's a quick snapshot and highlight of our Cost Center 310. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, moving on.
Good evening. I'm from South Elementary School, Cost Center 312. Starting on page 57, we presented, we created a level service budget at South Elementary as well. We currently have 634 students at South Elementary this year, and we built this budget based upon 625 students, so a slight decline, but not too, too much. We have current, currently, we have 31 sections, grades K through 5. We house a, an ASD program at our school, which consists of three classrooms, K through 5, and there are about 21 students in that program this year. Our free and reduced numbers were about 27% this year. We are not a Title I school at South Elementary. Like some of my counterparts, we have High Point supporting some of our students, where we have two different counselors come in throughout the week, probably a total of about four days between both of them, and we're looking at probably around, supporting about 30 students as well. Over the years, our PTA has been extremely supportive in, in funding our extra programs that we have, and events in our building, and, and field trips. They brought authors to South, they're, this year, they're bringing the Earth Dome, an anti-bullying program. They've also put in two water bottle filling stations, as well as replaced all the playground mulch at our building as well, on there, that they paid for. And then I echo, really, most of the lines that, that you see for supplies have decreased a little bit due to just student numbers, and then the other increases are due to staffing as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Principal Lysdale?
Yeah, I know you said you had 634 now, but how many are you projecting for next year?
625.
Any other questions? Okay. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, and next, we're moving over to Scott Williams. He's the principal at West Elementary. And before Scott goes on with his budget, we've heard tonight that we do have English, English language learner educational opportunities in our school, and one of the things that we did, every, every time we have a reduction in a certain area, and we have a staff member that we believe that we can reallocate, we reallocate to a program that may need it. Years ago, we just had three ELL staff in the district, that we've doubled that because of demand and need, and because of state mandates. So, we didn't see an increase in the budget because we reallocated, so we didn't see more staff coming to the table. So, we've done that with another, some other programs that we've had in the district, and that's our model. Instead of coming to the table to look for more money to add staff, we look at doing audits of enrollments, audits of programming, and we do, we do those adjustments so that we don't have to come to the table and add more staffing. We just do internally. So, that's why you see, we have this program, that program. We've added, added those over the years. I think we've talked about it, but we really haven't clarified it as much as, you know, you kind of see the programs in play tonight. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Hello, good evening, Scott Williams, principal at West Elementary School, Cost Center 314. This is page 67 on report 352. So, I'm very pleased to present to you the West budget forecasted for 2019-20. It is, I'm sorry if I'm being redundant at this point in the program, but this is a same-level service budget for Cost Center 314. The increases are due to contractual salary obligations, as Dr. Maestas and Mr. Costin referenced earlier. We currently have 354 students, K to 5. We are projected to have 331 next year. We have a staff count of 80 full and part-time employees, 17 general education classrooms, two sections of kindergarten, three sections of grades 1 to 5. We do house two district-wide programs for Plymouth, two life skills classrooms, and three care program classrooms. We also have three moderate special needs classrooms. We are not currently identified as a Title I school, nor are we identified as an ESL ELL school. We do not offer those services at West. Our free and reduced lunch students represent 31% of our population, and as my colleagues have mentioned earlier, we do rely very heavily on the partnerships with our PTAs. The West PTA has been a wonderful group of folks, very dedicated to our students at West. They fund our cultural arts enrichment programs, technology purchases, iPads, Ladybug document cameras, field day trips. We've also partnered to, to get some grants this year. We've done some trauma work at West School, and that was funded through a grant program, as well as a generous donation from the Lions Club. So, much of the resources that we have at our school are not reflected in this budget, they come from initiatives from our PTA. And that pretty much wraps it up for Cost Center 314.
Any questions for Principal Williams? I'm not seeing any. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a request for a very brief break, so we will take a recess until 8:15, please.
I'd like to bring this meeting back to order. Thank you very much.
And now, we're ready for Department-wide Elementary School, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. Cost Center 319, District-wide Elementary can be found on page 73 of your detail reports. Approximately $531,000, which represents a 4.9% increase overall. All but $2,100 approximately of this are all based in salaries. So this budget houses our district-wide services that are shared across our elementary schools, so for example, our elementary instrumental teachers, we provide instrumental instruction with four teachers across eight elementary schools to grade four and five students. Dr. Maestas mentioned just a few minutes ago, adjustments we've made over time for services that we lacked in, in the past, and we did that through our staff audits. This is one example. Several years ago, I want to say about five or six years ago. Several years ago, I want to say about five or six years ago, our families would, would pay for these services, so we had very low participation, so this is built into our budget now, so we're happy about that. We also have two district-wide elementary coaches, one health educator, supports all eight elementary schools, as well as funding and supplies for our district-wide elementary robotics program, which is for our grade four and five students. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for Dr. Campbell on, on district-wide? Okay, no questions.
Yes, we're moving over to our middle schools. We're going to start with Cost Center 321, Plymouth Community Intermediate School, and we'll go to Mr. Palladino.
Okay, thank you. Today, I didn't mean to clap, I'm sorry. I was waiting for you guys to join me. The budget being presented tonight is a, is a same-level service budget. This budget was done in collaboration with our wonderful district coordinators and directors, and reviewed by the PCIS School Council at our November twenty-ninth meeting. Projected enrollment for PCIS for the two thousand twenty school year is a thousand fifty-three, which is nine students less than this year. Due to the enrollment staying relatively the same, there was no real significant changes to the PCIS budget. The PCIS houses three district-wide programs, CARE, which is a program for our students with emotional impairments. The projected enrollment for CARE next year is seventeen, but these projections increase throughout the year because new students are referred throughout the year. The second program is the Basic Skills Program, which is a program for intellectual impairments, and the projected enrollment for Basic Skills is seventeen students as well. Lastly, we house the ELL program at PCIS, and the projected enrollment is twenty-one students, and in fact, today we enrolled a student from the Congo, so it's our first one from there. So they, again, that enrollment changes throughout the year and it usually increases. And we don't have an ASD program, but PCIS does have twenty students, over twenty students that are, that carry the ASD diagnosis, and these students are serviced with the MSNs like the rest of our students on IUPs. PCIS has ninety-four teachers and counselors, two nurses, twenty-two paraprofessionals, five secretary, secretarial staff members, and nine custodial staff members. Due to the high demands of our social, the social-emotional needs, we do work with South Bay Community Service, and we also have two Gosnold counselors that work within the school, and that's at no cost to the district. Our free and reduced lunch is, population is thirty-seven point three-three percent, and that's stayed relatively the same from last year. We do receive, just like the other schools, a lot of support from our PTA. They fund field trips, they fund enrichment opportunities, field days, the Olympics, but they also cover some of the costs for students that may not be able to afford to go on field trips. The PTA, PTA does pick up a lot of those costs. They do family events, like today's Honest Breakfast, so there, anywhere, anytime we need funding to provide something for our students, our PTA is there. So that is basically the budget in a nutshell, you can hold your applause. Can't. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions, comments? Okay.
Yes, tonight we have Plymouth South Middle School and Principal Steve Morgan.
Good evening. Tonight I am happy to be presenting the level service budget for Cost Center 322, Plymouth South Middle School, based on an anticipated enrollment of six hundred and sixty students for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. We house, at our school, we house three district-wide program classrooms, two ASD classrooms, and a life skills classroom. Currently, our demographics, our student demographics have as a twenty percent of our population, our students identified as having disabilities. Nineteen percent of our student population is identified as being economically disadvantaged. Our staff includes sixty-seven certificated teachers and staff members, and another twenty-five staff members who are mostly part-time members of our staff. We have a thriving PTA that, who supports a large number of our student programs, including family events, service projects, and field trips. In addition, the PTA funds the purchase and replacement of uniforms for all of our athletic teams, as well as provides financial assistance for families in need within our school community on things like, for instance, if we have eighth-grade students who can't afford yearbooks, they'll purchase the yearbooks for them. Our partnership with local mental health agencies continues to provide much-needed support for our students and their families, with over two dozen children receiving school-based counseling services from Gosnold and South Bay Community Services. As far as line items go for the budget, we don't have a lot, lots of report, other than small changes in the instructional supplies and material lines of some of our academic departments. Our only real change is the buyout of a lease on one of our copy machines, and a new lease on another copier to replace the machine in our special education office, which we can no longer buy replacement parts for because it is obsolete.
I just wanted to make a general comment on all the budgets that have been presented so far. The modest increases are in very appropriate areas. As you read through this, you see science supplies, you see book rebounding, you see new titles. They're modest, but those are the areas where we need to spend money.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Badger?
Just wondering how many students you have this year?
We have seven hundred and ten students currently.
Thank you.
So you're going from seven-ten to six-sixty?
We are.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So for both you and maybe even South Elementary Redbrook, is that a projection, is that affecting you? I would think you'd be going up because of that development, no?
We haven't so far.
Yeah. It was projected to be like...
Dr. Miasis?
I thought that was more families.
They're, the projections that were, initially were projected for South Middle School were minimal. Of course, they only have a hundred and twenty-five of a projected eleven-hundred homes.
I was going to say of the thousand plus.
So they're still in the early development. Keep in mind that, you know, typically, we will see enrollment increases for projects like that, but it, it, it is the elementary, middle, and high, it's not all in one school. Right now, I think the, the numbers that we're seeing out of that development for our South schools is, is minimal, minimal.
But it wasn't supposed to be.
We're actually seeing more movement into Pine Hills than we ought to have for students, for families.
And we're looking at that past the five years that we had to plan too for the schools, right? That's when we're expecting that to hit.
Well, keep in mind, just to the comment on enrollment, we submitted all the development information from Redbrook to the MSBA for South High School, and I think they gave us a, a change in our overall population of like twenty students. It was minimal. And I did submit that as a rebutment to their initial enrollment.
Right, well, I remember that, yeah, that's why I asked.
It was a small change.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Miasis, back to you.
Yes, and now we are done with our middle schools, and we're going to our high schools. We're going to start with Plymouth North High School. We'll have Plymouth North come up, Plymouth South come up, and Plymouth South Vocational. So we'll start with Peter Parson, Peter is the principal at Plymouth North High School, and he's here tonight to talk about North.
Good evening, I'm happy to be the new principal at Plymouth North High School. I am happy to be a part of the Plymouth Public Schools. We are looking at Cost Center 331, it starts on page one oh six. I appreciate all the help from the program managers and the academic coordinators in helping me put the budget together this year. We discussed the school council, with the school council, the budget in October and November at both of our meetings. This will come as no surprise, it's a level service budget, it's a very similar budget to last year. You'll notice in some of the academic areas that the Harbor Academy enrollments are included in our numbers as well, that's continuing from last year. We have a hundred and ninety-one staff members, nurses, custodians, secretaries, paraprofessionals, and teaching staff, we have four administrators. The enrollment is largely stable, we were at twelve-seventy-three last year, we're down twelve students to twelve-sixty-one projected for next year. We have district-wide programs for selected special populations for the care program, project growth, life skills, and ELL students. Our special ed percentage is sixteen percent, which is slightly lower than the district average. Our high-needs percentage is at thirty-three percent, according to the Department of Education. You'll notice that there are really no major budget changes with a few exceptions. You'll notice that we merged some of the supply lines together in a lot of the academic areas and in special ed, but really the, the totals are basically the same, we've just consolidated a lot of those lines together. The academic departments need to update the enrollment numbers as well, if you noticed in some of those details, in both science, ELI, math, and social studies. The big increase is our accreditation, which is happening in October of two thousand nineteen, so you'll see an added budget line at the end of our budget for twenty-five thousand dollars for the NIESK appropriations for accreditation in the following year. But other than that, there are small increases for officials and MIAA and, and supplies similar to every other Cost Center area.
Questions?
I have a quick one, the, the, picking a twenty-five thousand dollar figure on accreditation, how do you pick that figure?
So, great question, that was my question when I, when I met with a lot of different schools. The, I, I wanted to make sure that we had enough budgeted, I don't know if that's going to be the total, but typically when both South and North have had accreditations in the past, that's the number that they've used to budget for the overall. Schools have to pay for the hotel of the visiting committee.
I understand the costs, I just wonder how you got that figure?
Yep.
I'm involved quite a bit with the association, and that's a typical cost. It, it counts meals, printing, anything that goes to the accreditation process, it actually starts on a Sunday night and goes to a Wednesday afternoon, so it's four days of, of that work, but that's pretty much the going rate. And, and, yeah, that's, that's about it.
All right, moving on.
Yes, now, we're going to listen to Cindy Sylvia, she is the, the vocational director for programs at both North and South, so she'll start off tonight talking about North. So Cindy?
Good evening, I'm Cost Center 334, Plymouth North Vocational. At Plymouth North Vocational, we have three hundred and forty-one current CCTE students in four vocational programs, with an additional number of non-CCTE students that we service through this Cost Center in three academic areas, in wood design, computer science, and office technology. We have nine full-time instructors, one full-time para educator that we also have through this Cost Center, and like everybody else, it's a level service budget for this upcoming year, with not a lot of major changes within the vocational budget.
So you have three forty-one, are you projecting three forty-one?
I would guess because we have a waiting list in all areas, so it would be pretty, pretty much the same.
Moving on to Plymouth South High School, Principal Jim Hannah, Cost Center 332.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Hannah, I'm the principal of Plymouth South High School. This evening I'll be presenting to you a same-level service budget for Plymouth South High School. This begins on page one twenty-three, and has also been shared with our school council. As you know, we are a comprehensive high school, proudly servicing the district's ASD program at the high school level. Currently, we are at one thousand and sixty-two students, and we are projected for the next year at one thousand and forty-nine students. Our special education population is twenty percent, and our budget this evening represents a hundred and thirty-five staff members, which include our academic staff, our special education teachers, our guidance counselors, our therapists or psychologists, nurse educators, administrators, of course, our full-time and part-time paraprofessionals, and other support service employees. This does not include our vocational staff, which is under Cost Center 333. Our proposed budget for the two thousand twenty school year represents a three-point-seven increase from FY nineteen, however, thanks to the hard work of our coordinators and directors, they ensure that the funds represent a level service budget this evening for supplies and materials by reducing some lines to accommodate increases in others. So as you see some increases in the far-right column in the detail pages, you'll also see those that have been reduced. So therefore, overall, our supplies and materials, if you break down those percentages, is less than one percent, at point seven-five. So therefore, the remaining increase of, which adds up to three-point-seven, would certainly be represented by salaries, and of course, the increased costs for contracted services for the beautiful new building that we have, to maintain a high level of technology and equipment from anywhere from the VPA and Performing Arts Center, to the Black Box Theater, to the instructional supplies and materials that are found at a high level of technology throughout the entire building. Because as warranty expires in certain areas of the building, we're prepared in this budget to offset those costs for the upcoming school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the Plymouth South High School budget.
Okay. Next, we have Cindy is going to speak again to the Plymouth South High School vocational budget. Cindy?
This represents Cost Center 333, and that's on one, page one thirty-seven. At Plymouth South High School, there are five hundred and seventy-four CCTE students in thirteen vocational programs, with an additional non-CCTE students that are serviced through this Cost Center in two areas, business technology and tech electives. We have thirty-four full-times teachers, two full-time para educators, one part-time para educator. And things to note in this budget is that there is an increase in industrial materials, a slight increase, like copper and wood for some of the vocational programs, but we're also able to offset the cost of that through appropriating funds from other places. Outside of salaries, which is a slight increase, Cost Center 333 and 334 also come in as not only level service, but level funded outside of salaries with, with regard to materials and supplies. And also, in the admin budget that support both schools at North and South but are under this Cost Center, are two full-time clerical staff. So any questions?
Questions? When you give your numbers, they're already included in your numbers, right? They're not in addition to your numbers?
The student number?
You give your total numbers of the schools, includes the vote students.
No.
It's, no, the salaries are all in Cost Center 333 and 334, which is not part of Peter and our budget.
All right, how about in student enrollment numbers?
Enrollment numbers are included, yes.
Included in it, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Miasis?
Next, we're going to go to Dr., to Mr. Costin, he's going to be talking about Cost Center 336, Regional Vocational Technical School tuitions. I, I might add that this is a change to our budget. About two years ago, we did not have this line item, it was a line item that was a town meeting line item, and it was requested from town meeting that we actually insert this into our budget, so, Mr. Costin?
Thank you. This Cost Center, as Dr. Miasis says, covers tuitions for students that attend vocational schools that are out of the district. The reason we pay for students who attend vocational schools not in Plymouth are primarily for programs that are not offered in Plymouth, and those programs would be in the agricultural area. So the students would either be attending Norfolk or Bristol-Aggie. This year, we had budgeted, in this past year, we had budgeted for seven students, that's why there's a decrease, we are going down to, it went down to five students this year, and in all actuality, we will have four students because we had one that moved. What's happened, this is, this has always been a moving target because you, you were billed on, and I say billed, you were sent an invoice based on what the students, the students who actually attended during that school year, so you had to project. What Bristol has done is they've been approved by DESE and they voted their board of directors, that they will now be sending us an assessment for the October one enrollment. So the number of students that we have in October, on October one, we will be billed for, for the coming year, that number of slots. So essentially, there's a year catch-up for each of that, and in a way, it works to our benefit that, that we're able to project our budget. As far as transportation, we're obligated to pay for transportation for these students, that is still budgeted within the town account. We have cut that drastically, and we'll, we'll be reviewing that at some point, but we've cut that drastically because we provide the bus. We use one, we use one of our propane, actually, mini-buses to drive back and forth at one-third of the cost.
Questions on those four students? Okay, Dr. Miasis?
Moving to the district-wide coordinators, we have Cost Center 347, Visual and Performing Arts, Mike, Mike Capel. We also have district-wide technology, Cost Centers 352 and 362, we have Julia Colby and Alan McLean, and we also have our district-wide coordinator services, which is Lisa White. Lisa, actually... Lisa actually is the facilitator of that budget. So we'll start with VPA and Mike Capel.
Good evening. Again, I'm Mike Capel, representing Cost Center 347 District-Wide Visual and Performing Arts. It's report 352 on page 152 and 153. Not to say ditto, but ditto, this is a level-service budget that meets our students' needs in various programs and opportunities, but at the same time, very minimal increase, and that is certainly due to contractual obligations. There's nothing really new to speak of in the Cost Center 347. I would like to just reiterate also the community support that we have in Plymouth, certainly from the town, but also other organizations. We have a parent organization, the Plymouth Schools Music Association. They do, they work tremendously hard to raise money and help our kids reduce costs for certain opportunities. We also work with the Emily Swartz Foundation, which helps support our student travel specifically to the UK with the Plymouth International Course, has helped fund our anthology program, which we've done over the last few years with the ELA Department and Dr. White, and also recently, the Plymouth Rock Foundation, which is a new organization, 501(c)(2) Plymouth that brings cultural opportunities to Plymouth. And then what they've done is they've donated their proceeds to music programs, and we have received very generous funds from the Plymouth Rock Foundation as well. So it is a community effort, and we look for opportunities that are funded, and also that we go out and look for funds for extra opportunities for our students. So if you have any questions about the budget in 347, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Are there any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Moving on to technology, Cost Center 352, Julia Colby.
Good evening. Cost Center 352, and it is in page 161. Again, a level-service budget. The increases, which are very slight, you'll see only in the software due to the contractual services. No increases in any other line items. And if you have any questions, or if you want to wait until Alan's done, any questions on technology, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing to do, Dr. Sorensen, if we hear from both technology staff, and then we can, we have some questions that we want to, or a couple of slides I want to show on technology. So turn it over to Alan McLean. He's our system engineer, and he's responsible for Cost Center 362. Alan?
Good evening. Cost Center 362 Technology Center begins on page 191. It's a level-service budget. I do have some increases in contracted services, and those are made up due to support increases in our voice and data networks, as well as contracted engineering hours to maintain the same level of service that we have today.
Questions?
One of the things, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to highlight, I put, Alan put together a couple of slides for the school committee. Typically, we talk about things that we have on the radar down the road, concerns that we have regarding budgetary issues, and I think technology, probably for the last 20 years, has always been on that radar of how do we keep pace with the demand within our schools? So the slide that you have in front of you tonight demonstrates the age that we have of our technology in our schools, and I think you can get a good picture of where we are within the lifespan of technology across the district. So we do have a number of devices in our district. It's high. The demand is high. We are now, we have now moved over to a complete assessment system that involves technology, so every assessment as of this year across the district, MCAS is all on computers. We do have a level of sustainability and maintainability that we need to have for these machines, so this is what we have for age of devices in the district. The next slide demonstrates the district Chromebook rollout that we have. We have roughly 4,000 Chromebooks in the district. And keep in mind, Chromebooks are the model of how we really roll in the district today with technology. Our teachers like them, they, our students really have gravitated to using them, and this is, the Chromebook is the mechanism for assessment. So when a kid takes an assessment, they get a Chromebook, it's automatically configured to their login. They then have a secure login for assessment purposes, but when you take a look at the span of life, a Chromebook is roughly good for about two years. They're inexpensive, but again, the battery life starts to shut down. They do have a end-of-life, you know, cycle that we need to keep in mind, which really leads into the discussion that we'll have in the future, because I think the district really needs to look at a model of sustainability. I believe that at the school committee table, we're going to have a conversation about one-to-one, and I do believe we need to investigate that model, because in order for us to have computers that are in the window of operability, to be able to maintain what we see as viable computers for our students, that may be something that we look at. But when you take a look at, you know, the two slides that we have here tonight, we definitely are going to be running into some issues with the end-of-life on some of these computers. Some of the computers that we have that are desktop-based and not Chromebook internet appliances, you know, we run into problems even with them running operating systems. So as they get older, they basically get phased out because they're not capable of running some of the network software that we need, some of the applications that we need to run. So we're going to be forced to be able to have that conversation at the table of how do we do this? I think, you know, moving into 2020, I think, you know, we have a window of time that we need to come up with our model of how we're going to address this, and it's something that we'll work with Julian and Alan on, to really come up with that model's going to be for our district. We do believe that our model, our, we do believe that our network is, has really shaped up over the years. Alan has done a monumental job of increasing bandwidth connectivity across the district, wireless capabilities this year for the first year in our district. We run an open guest network, which is something we didn't do because we were hurting for bandwidth, and I think Alan has made some adjustments to that, which has allowed us to be able to open that up. So we just want to put these slides in here for you tonight to be able to give you an opportunity to see that this is a concern that we have moving forward budgetarily. And we have talked to the finance committee about it in our discussions last year about the long-term plan. We have discussed with, you know, with you, the school committee, and our staff about how do we try to maintain a decent level of computer age in this district? So with that said, Dr. Sorensen, I'll turn it back to you.
Let me say that, could you, I want a copy of those slides to add to the slides.
Absolutely.
It's a good reference. Because I think it'll be discussed on town meeting floor.
Absolutely. We will definitely do that. We did add, to the latest PowerPoint that's on the electronic school board, I did add those slides. Actually, our staff added those this afternoon, so the latest version of the PowerPoint was modified this afternoon to include these two slides. Okay? Okay. With that said, Alan, Julia, have anything else to add? I know I presented those, Alan, for you, but...
Perfect, eh? Fine job.
Done.
All right. Yeah, they're here.
Great. Awesome. Very good. So Dr. Sorensen, back to you.
We are at Lisa White, right?
Yes.
Yes, Lisa.
Dr. White's going to sing a song.
Good evening. Lisa White, I'm representing the Coordinator Services, which is essentially our office. It's Cost Center 354 on page 171, and the account essentially is the salaries of the coordinators and four coordinators, two secretaries, and membership dues, travel reimbursement, and office supplies, including printing. The only slight increase is to the copy machine budget. Other than that, it's level service and pretty much as is.
Any questions to Dr. White? Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Mastas.
Yes, we are moving now to our Special Education and Pupil Services Program. We have our Cost Center 301, which is Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Plymouth Early Childhood Center is at PCIS, and Denise Tobin is the director of that program, and then after that, we'll move into our other programs tonight. So Denise, we'll start with you, and welcome.
So at the Plymouth Early Childhood Center, our current enrollment is 197, and it changes daily. As students turn three, they have the ability to come. We currently have 44 staff, and that includes nine special ed teachers, 20 part-time para professionals, three and a half speech pathologists, a PT and OT, a speech assistant who we share with another building in the district, and an occupational therapy assistant who we also share with another building in the district. Let's see. The only increase in this budget you'll see is due to salary, and there's one slightly significant increase in one of the salaries, and that's because one of the grants that we have been receiving is going to be eliminated after this year. Our program is really sustained through our revolving account, which comes from the tuition that our peers pay, and currently, 20% of our peers are on a free or reduced tuition. And PCIS has the Gosnold Counseling Services, and we have access to those, and currently we have referred three students to access that Gosnold Counseling Services. I think that's it?
Questions? Just a quick one. The increase in the substitute line, 42% on page 2 of 195?
I can speak to that. Yeah, I can speak to that. Some of the accounts, as I previously mentioned, that there were some changes in DESE codes, and they, professional development was one of them, and also substitutes, keeping track of substitutes for professional development, long-term, short-term, the DESE wants those numbers. So we added those accounts. In addition to that, we took the amounts that we paid in the previous years, previous year, and we reallocated those going forward, so that they would, so it would be representative of what we spent. So that's why you're seeing, that's one of those unusual anomalies because of the DESE account changes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Dr. Mastas.
Yes, now we're moving to our District-Wide Alternative High School Program, which is Kevin Avatably. He is Cost Center 335. Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening. Again, my name's Kevin Avatably, Cost Center 352, 335, page 149. We are a level-service budget, currently servicing 38 students. 100% of our students receive free and reduced lunch, with 42% on special education, receiving specialized education service, services. We are a cost-saving program for the district. We have several students who could be placed out of the district, but because of our program, are able to stay within our district and service within. There was a lot to do over the summer as we met kind of, as we reprogrammed and restructured the current program to the day as opposed to the evening, and a lot was made about whether the 15 adjunct staff members that we had would transition into the five full-time FTEs that you see on this current detail form. As you can see, we had a .9 increase between last year's budget to this year's budget, which indicates that we were able to consolidate those 15 adjunct staff members into the five full-time staff members that are with us now. So we now, we currently have seven full-time staff members with only the COLIT increases for our staff members under the current budget. We also were able to eliminate one of the cost lines with the Gatcher contract that we had as a contracted services, because we were no longer in need of their services, so that was a large decrease from our budget, which indicates why we have such a small increase to our current proposal. Any questions?
You have how many students in your program?
We have 38 students, and that varies pretty much up and down throughout the course of the year, depending on referrals.
Thank you.
We're moving now to Student Support Services, Cost Center 348, and Dr. Halpin.
Thank you, Dr. Mastas. Good evening. Cost Center 348 is Student Support Services, and the report is on page 352, excuse me, it's report number 352 on pages 155 and 156. Just a general idea of Student Support Services. It comprises the School Counseling Department, English Learner Education, McKinney-Vento Homeless Education, Foster Care Stability and Transportation, the District-Wide Supervisor of Attendance, General Ed Tutoring Services, Homeschooling, and High School MCAS Math Tutoring. You'll see the budget itself is about $1.2 million. It represents a 2.12% increase. It is a level-service budget. The 8.9 full-time salary positions within the budget represent about 52% of that. It includes six certified ESL instructors, and you heard earlier tonight, we have five designated ESL schools. We also are providing some ESL services at South High for our foreign exchange students this year from China. We have an attendance supervisor within that budget line, a .5 secretary that we share the other .5 with Educational Technology, the director, myself, and then home and hospital tutoring education for students. The other piece to this line that is important to take a look at is our transportation for homeless students as well as foster care students. You'll notice that's a pretty big amount. We have been able, over the years, to designate that amount of money to make sure that our students can remain in their schools of origin, and that line is somewhat unpredictable. We have received reimbursement over the years from the state to the town. I'd just like to point out, as I have in other times when we meet, that that reimbursement is likely to decrease because of the fact that foster care transportation is now completely encumbered upon the school district. It's not a shared cost if students live outside of our town. We have received about 35% back from the state from year to year. I see now the designation between foster care and homelessness as probably the reimbursement will be a little bit less moving forward, and I just want to point that out. Our numbers of students in those areas over the years have been somewhere between, you know, 100 and 150 students between homelessness and foster care. A couple of other significant things before I finish up. We do have a line within my budget that provides college board testing for students, PSATs and SATs for students, grades nine through 12. We also transport students in our ESL schools who are not districted within the town, the lines of the school. We have five students right now who we do transport to ESL schools so they can receive those services. This budget line also includes tuition for Massachusetts recovery schools. From year to year, we average anywhere from one to four students. The budget line is about $30,000. Right now, we have one student, and it's about $14,000 per year. It's a little bit unpredictable, and we do keep that open for our students who have significant challenges with substance abuse or addiction. So just as, by way of summary, it is a 2.12% increase. That mostly represents contractual obligations within salaries. And the last thing I guess I'd say is, you've heard some information tonight about decreasing enrollments in areas. We have had some decreasing enrollments, while at the same time, the needs within the district that I see from my lens in my office continue to increase. Our ESL population has grown from a little under 100 students last year to about, I think we're at 123 when I last checked today before I left the office. We've also seen increases just across the board in social-emotional needs of our students. We try to, you know, do our best to staff that with our, with the people that work in our schools, but we've, over the years, definitely utilized community resources across the district to help provide a level of service to the students and their families as well. So I guess that really summarizes the key points to my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, that was great. Dr. Mastas.
Yes, moving on to Cost Center 353, District-Wide Special Education Services, Dr. Rogers.
I'm Stacy Rogers. I'm the Director of Special Education, Cost Center 353. Projected enrollment for the district next year is 7,407. Total active special education students projected for FY '20 is... Total active special education students projected for FY '20 is 1,547. That's approximately 20.8%. This number, since I've been here, has remained relatively stable. Two increases that you'll see, a lot of my detail was in Dr. Mestas's slides, so I won't repeat them, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, was the increase in transportation. That's a contractual obligation. So you'll see the increase for that. And then we are moving to a digital assessment platform. So for the students who require special education testing every three years, we are entering into a contract with Pearson Assessments, and teachers will be able to assess students digitally, online, which will, overall, it's cost-neutral for this year, but overall, it'll be a district savings moving forward. It will improve efficiencies and decrease waste with regard to testing protocols and repurchasing test kits. I did also want to mention Title I. Dr. Mestas had alluded to that, to that grant continuing to decrease. We decreased by three part-time staff members this year, and that was through attrition. So that's how we've been able to keep our level of service without putting any additional burdens on the district. Any questions?
Dr., Mr. Costin.
If I may, just for the Finance Committee and the School Committee, but just to point out, if you look on page, I'm sorry, page 167, just so if there's any confusion, there are three accounts in there for out-of-district tuition and tuition payments to collaboratives. And you'll notice that they vary year to year. What I wanted to let you know is all of those items are less circuit breaker. In other words, we apply circuit breaker to one of those or a number of those accounts, whichever fits best into our budget based on the population we have. So we take some of the tuitions and we charge them to circuit breaker, anticipated circuit breaker. The way it works, because you will see in some of the expended numbers, well, why do we have a 91% decrease? We really didn't. It's just a matter of who's paying for it. It's the state, circuit breaker, that comes back to the town or us. And the way it works is they require us, the DESE requires us to do, to pay for it essentially, and do a reclassification. We credit back the budget when we receive a circuit breaker. So that's why those numbers vary from year to year. But if you add them up in aggregate, that's where you get those totals that you'll see in our, that we discuss for overall tuitions.
Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Mestas.
I think we're done. We're moving over to District-Wide Central Office Services. District-wide undistributed, that's Cost Center 350. And Mr. Costin will present that budget tonight.
Thank you. Cost Center 350, this is really a district-wide cost center, which rolls in a number of items that really don't fit anywhere else. Kind of the misfit account, I guess you would call it. But one thing I wanted to point out is if you look at, this is at page 158. 2018 expended was 220,000. If you recall, last year, we had an exorbitant increase in this. And it stayed pretty level for this year. This is the cost center that we include anticipated contract settlements. So that's why those are higher this year and for '20. We haven't settled any contracts for '20, so we have to carry COLAs and contract anticipated settlements in here. Hopefully, we'll settle the contracts, and for '21, you'll see that number go back down in the $200,000 range. This also covers employee separation costs. When we have employees that leave, if they have sickly buyout, we have to classify those and break those out per DESE codes. And you'll see all of those. And our yearly audit, as Dr. Mestas spoke, we have to have audits every year. We have a program of auditing our revolving accounts and our student activity funds, which I think we're all very proud of, that we keep on top of those. And the DESE requirement, we audit all of our expenditures and the end-of-the-year reports in the middle every year. And that's pretty much what's in that account.
Any questions here? No, thank you.
Moving over to Cost Center 351, District-Wide Accountability and Measurement. This is Karen Vanette. Karen is here tonight. And this is our accountability system for enrollment all the way to exit. So Karen.
Hi, good evening. Cost Center 351. The majority of this is contracted services for all of the software applications that support data management, reporting, and analysis. Those are listed out in the detail, some support assessment. Our student information system, Aspen, is included in here as well, plus a few others. The only difference between last year and this year is contractual obligations for salaries. And then I did add TransFinder GIS map updates. We've gotten to the point where there's so much development in this town that we can't, it's not realistic for us to add streets manually to our bus software. So I reached out to the company, and they will grab the new GIS maps and import them on an annual basis at this point for us so that we can keep up with all the changes in the bus routes. But that pretty much covers this cost center. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions here? There are none.
Thank you.
Moving on to Cost Center 355, District-Wide Central Office Administration Services. This is my Cost Center, Cost Center 355. There are adjustments that are in that budget that are relative to staffing changes. We had retirement. We have a number of changes in my budget across central office. But this budget is same level of service. Any increases that you'll notice to this budget are relative to contractual obligation. We level-funded pretty much everything that has to do with memberships and things of that nature. So this budget is level service for salaries, and everything else is, when we were able to, level-funded. So with that said, Dr. Sorenson, that's Cost Center 355.
Any questions here? Thank you.
Now we have Cost Center 356, Curriculum and Professional Development. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Cost Center 356 is approximately $518,000, and is exactly the same as it was, is this fiscal year. So there's a 0% increase to this budget. This budget is overwhelmingly contractual obligation specifically for professional development. Dr. Mestas noted that we have obligations to provide a level of professional development to our staff to support the many certifications that they hold. And this is actually a small contribution to the many courses and credits that our certificated staff need to take in order to relicens every five years. So the majority of the funds support that. There is some funds there, approximately $60,000, that also go towards curriculum development and improvements as the frameworks get changed. That's included there. And there is, one thing that I'd like to note is while this budget hasn't increased, our last contract, we did add, we have two full-day professional development days, where we offer a lot of additional PD that we didn't in prior years. So we're doing that with the same budget. So I'm happy to say we have a tremendous support between our principals, coordinators, and directors to provide a level of support, as well as our classroom teachers and specialists to do that. So we provide a tremendous amount of PD for a consistent price, I should say. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just.
Mr. Costin.
I'm sorry, just one comment. This is a perfect example of Dr. Campbell's budget, since he handles most of the district's professional development. You'll see a number of accounts where they're expended in 2018, but there's nothing in 19 or 20. But there are now new accounts in 2019 and '20. So that was what I had spoken to about the professional development, the new DESE codes. So if you, they've all been aggregated into the new accounts.
Thank you.
Moving on to Cost Center 357, District-Wide Human Resources. Mrs. Frye.
Yes, as with everyone else this evening, there are minimal changes to this budget. Cost Center 357, it's page 180. The bulk of this budget is really in our legal fees for the district, as well as our contracted service for school spring, our hiring application that we use. We are anticipating, you'll see a reduction in the legal fees line. We anticipate contract settlements that we're hopeful for, where those were increased a little bit more this year because of the pending negotiations. In my department, the major role which isn't reflected in the budget is what Dr. Mestas alluded to earlier, that, as you heard from all the principals and coordinators and directors, the changing needs of our children are dramatic, from ELL to special needs to the social-emotional needs, which I think you hear a lot during the school improvement plan meetings. And as a result, we need to shift funds to appropriately staff our buildings for things that may have existed in prior years. We may need to shift and move different pieces. As well as when we have a retirement, we may take those funds and look at a student with significant challenges that need support and deserve that by law. So we monitor that regularly throughout the year, and I want to thank the principals, coordinators, and directors for their support in that. So that's our budget.
Okay, moving on. Cost Center 358, District-Wide Business Services and Operations. Mr. Costin.
Cost Center 358 covers really general operations of the business service, but also a number of operations for the school district in the contracted services area that Dr. Mestas highlighted during the presentation, which have some measurable increases. This account, this cost center covers really utilities, except electricity, which we'll talk about in a minute. The bus transportation, resource officers, our traffic officers, our crossing guards. Some of the areas to really highlight is that, and again, Dr. Mestas highlighted these, the transportation is up $171,000. We have a cost escalator in our contract. As you know, we have a 10-year contract with First Student. And this is year two, and it's about a 3% increase every year that it goes up. Phones have gone up, our phone system, connectivity charges, natural gas, $171,000. That's in two areas. We're anticipating about a 5% to 7% increase in natural gas. Just a reminder to the committee that we do a collaborative bid with a number, a number of towns and school districts, but that bid is up in December of '19. So at the beginning of heating season. So we have to put a number in. Our representative, our utility representative, has recommended that number. Propane, we're also projecting an increase. Natural gas, we are seeing increased consumption at South High School. And that's something that we are, we had a meeting, Mr. Montron and myself, last week with the Energy Management System Coordinators for the system that we have there, which is different than our other systems. So we are, we're working with it, we're tweaking it, and we're going to be revising that and working, reducing the utilities hopefully there. We also have an increase in school security. As you know, we have some security staff in the buildings, our high schools, two days a week. And we also have, again, the crossing guards. So that's also an increase. And that's, the other increase that we have is we're running two buses per day. I know Alternative Ed for Harbor Academy said that they've dropped their GATRA contract. We are running two buses district-wide across the community, and we also have a van that we pick up some students with. So those students, we're able to pick them up as we do our other schools during, throughout the district. So that's also an increase in this budget.
Thank you.
Moving on to Cost Center 363, District-Wide Solar Renewable Energy. Mr. Costin.
Solar. I miss Mr. Bagley here for solar. This is, this cost center, as you know, represents, and we broke this out separately so that we could, we can continue to show the positive impact that we have with the energy initiatives for the district, which haven't stopped. This year is the fir, will be the first year of, and you can see that there's really, it's really level-funded, small decrease. While we're anticipating a 5% increase in the cost of electricity, we are not projecting an increase for the school district. As you know, we have some, we have fixed costs for the majority of our electricity, eight cents per kilowatt hour. And while there's an increase in the N-Star rate, our net metering credits will increase also the value of those to cover those costs, which is really a wonderful thing, the beauty of net metering credits. We don't anticipate any increase in, as I said, in solar electricity because we have fixed costs. We have a few fields that do have escalators, but they're minor. We do have, as you know, sharing with the town, and we've worked with them under our allocation. Our allocation has increased because of South High School. We've had to reallocate the Free Town, the Free Town site, where we were giving 15% to the town and 7%. And we essentially have 100% now going to the school because of the increase in consumption at South High School. And honestly, across the district. The interesting thing I'd like to point out in this, in this account is that if you look down on the page, we have two additional savings and one additional increased cost. The meter, the solar project array, which is about 350 kilowatts, is on top of South High School, became up and running in September, the end of August, in September. And I know the staff, Mr. Hannah and Mrs. Frye, were a great help in getting that coordination of getting that done, working around the staff. That was a big undertaking, and we project that's going to save $50,000. That's going to be, that's a behind-the-meter. There's no net metering, so that's going to run, slow that meter right down. The second thing we're excited about is that we, our battery is going to be delivered this December. And I know Mr. Montron is working hard on the location of the pad and getting that pad put in. But once that battery is up and running, we anticipate that'll save $25,000 per year in ICAP charges. As you know, ICAP charges and demand charges, which are daily. ICAP is that one time a year that they measure your usage. And it's usually in the summer when all the air conditioning's going. And for us, it works well because that's when the sun is out a lot, charging that battery, but yet the building's not occupied. So that'll reduce that, and we project that'll save about $25,000 a year. The final part, the new part, new addition, is our lease payment. We have a 10-year lease payment, as you know, for the lights, which are on the fields. And that's a 10-year payment of $85,000. That's a fixed payment. Once those are paid off for 10 years, we will own that, own all those lights. There is a turnover. So as you can see, we had talked to the town. We'd made a number of presentations about how we were going to cover the cost of those lights. And we're very close to covering 100% of the cost of the lighting system at South High School, something we're really excited about.
So if you add the, you add the 1.8, the $50,000, the $25,000, that represents the credits in this year's budget? Yes?
Correct. Correct.
Excellent.
And just remember, though, to get that 1.8, we're paying $900,000. So really, the net of that.
One of the things that we wanted to do within the budget process is to always provide awareness of our solar. That's why we've included this into the budget. It might not look as, look like an expense. It identifies the credits and the things that we are working on to actually integrate into our system so that we can save money. So I think it's good for the community to see that and for us to be constantly talking about it.
And I think the other thing to point out is that while that lease payment is 10 years, those, the battery savings, ICAP savings, and the solar savings from the rooftop are 20 years. The life of those are 20 years, so.
Okay, all right. Moving to the last account tonight is Cost Center 371, which is charter school, primarily charter school transportation. So Mr. Costin.
Yes, we really should change this now from just Rising Tide to MAP Academy. This, this cost center has a sizable increase of 63%. What's happened with, when we built this budget for FY '19, our anticipation was that we would be able to use existing buses, our buses from our existing bus fleet, and kind of fit. of fit those in like we do with Rising Tide for MAP Academy. What happened was MAP Academy has a much different calendar and time schedule that cannot fit in within our, cannot fit in where we have resources, buses available. So, they, and they actually go a different calendar. They have half-days on Wednesdays, and they also go during the school vacations. So, there are a number of reasons. So, we had, we went out and negotiated a separate contract with First Student for these buses. As a result, we have two buses, $372 a day, which cover the town. It's pretty much like a vocational school or regional school that runs one route, and it covers a lot of distance. These buses are covering a lot of distance to pick up these students, to bring them up to MAP Academy. We also use a town-owned bus to pick up what we call outliers because they're students that live out in areas down in Wareham Road or head of the bay that we just couldn't run a bus, and we'd have kids on buses for two hours. So, between those two, the combination, that's really the increase in this cost center.
MAP Academy has students from other towns as well, and they transport those students. We don't transport those students.
Correct.
So, Dr. Sorenson, tonight, we have presented the seven different segments of our budget, from district-wide facilities all the way to district-wide central office services. I would also stress that if there are any questions of the school committee, please feel free to bring them to our attention. We can make adjustments, if necessary. The adjustments, we can discuss our next school committee meeting, and we will be meeting with the Finance Committee. I talked to Mr. Hallam during the break. We're going to arrange a joint meeting with the Education Subcommittee, with the Finance Committee at some point in January, early January, so that we can begin to work with them on their recommendations. But, at this point, Dr. Sorenson, I just want to thank all our Cost Center managers who are here tonight, also the people that don't get a lot of attention during the budget process, and they're the staff in Mr. Costin's office. They have done a remarkable job to get this budget prepared for tonight. It will not be final until town meeting in April, so there is a number of adjustments we will make and clarifications we will make in communication, education to the community of what this budget entails. So, once again, I want to thank all our staff that are here and that are at home resting because we put them to heavy task in getting this done. So, with that said, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Committee members with any final points? I just want to say that when you meet with the Educational Subcommittee, that's open to the public.
It is open to the public, and that is an open meeting.
This budget gets presented several times.
Yeah, we will probably, I think last year, I presented the budget probably 20 times, so.
20 times.
There's opportunities, there are opportunities for people to get together and be part of that process.
And I say that because there was some criticism on town meeting floor last spring that people didn't have access to the budget, but if you present it 20 times, I would think if anybody wants to learn about it, it's there to learn about.
Yeah.
And I might add, it's on electronic school board. The school committee uses electronic school board to facilitate its meetings. Every bit of information that we presented tonight is on electronic school board, so the general community can have access to that as well.
Okay. Any other final comments? Fincom, Finance Committee members, School Committee members? Okay, any action to come before the School Committee at this point? Okay, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.